I'm ready.
Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to this edition of the Board of Commissioners meetings. I would like to remind everybody that this is a public meeting and we are being recorded via audio and visual. I was also told today that we have a new sound system working out today, and it picks up literally every conversation in the room. So if you don't want your conversations, your side conversations recorded, wait until we get outside. So that being said, it is time to swear in our commissioners, and we will start with Commissioner Alight, Cindy Dennison. Cindy, do you want your family around here or just?
That's family.
Sure. If you're my family, come on up. Come on, Henry. Well, you know what? I mean, we need my Timmons family too. So Deanna and Gary come up here and spoke and Norma. Come on.
Maybe, maybe they don't want to be associated with.
Not true. You don't have root for everybody up there.
Yes, I do. Come on, Spock.
And we also ask for any friend also.
The whole room.
You're shorter.
It is my pleasure, Cindy, to give you the oath of office. So could you please place your hand on the Bible held by your husband and raise your right hand and repeat after me. Excuse me. I, Celinda Ann Timmons.
I, Celinda Ann Timmons.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Oregon.
Of the state of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And will faithfully and honorably conduct myself.
And will faithfully and honorably conduct myself.
In the office of County Commissioner.
In the office of County Commissioner.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, County.
Do we sign more than one?
We had different colors.
Which color would you like?
Went to one that just made a suggestion.
No hunger worry. I can go to Safeway again.
Don't bet on it.
Well, thank you. I think, I think, I'm not sure, but I think you have a seat up there.
I think, am I going now?
Yes.
What?
I want to congratulate you.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
George, take your flowers.
Here's the button. These chairs go up and down like fogoes did so.
About to fix that. They're sitting down.
John Shaffer, do you have any friends here or?
I do. My family and pastors are here, so they've come up. This Bible has seen better days.
It's got used. That's good.
So John, it is my pleasure to place you under oath to serve as County Commissioner. Please place your hand on the Bible.
Raise the right hand.
I was just testing.
And please repeat after me. I, John M. Shaffer.
I, John M. Shaffer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Oregon.
Of the state of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And will faithfully and honorably conduct myself.
And will faithfully and honorably conduct myself.
In the office of County Commissioner.
In the office of County Commissioner.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God. Oh, good. Here?
Yes.
And could you sign one more, please?
I better not see these on eBay.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have a full slate of County Commissioners.
Okay, we have a short agenda. We're gonna try to keep it quickly because we have a celebration. Next is awards, recognitions, and correspondence. Where's your door?
Yes, I would like to ask Captain Primmer to come up. I did see her earlier.
Actually, I'm gonna defer to the sheriff. He's got a couple of different things.
Well, perfect. I would like to ask the sheriff to come up.
Well, it's a great morning. Congratulations. Welcome to you for your reelection, or your reelection and your election. And one of the things that we've sort of begun is recognizing some of our staff. By the way, Terry Rowan, Sheriff's Office. And so this is kind of a pretty big morning for one of our more senior dispatchers, Dispatcher Ben Johnson. Come on up, sir. This is honoring your service presented to telecommunicator Ben Johnson in appreciation of 20 years of his service as a first responder, telecommunicator for 911. We truly appreciate your loyalty, dedicated service to the people of Yumatoa County, dated December 17, 2022, Yumatoa County Sheriff's Office.
So. You can remain out there if you want.
Okay.
I also.
Did you have a floor?
Okay, thank you. I'd also like to make the presentation of our quarterly employee award. These are nominated by the department heads or the department managers. It's become a very, in my two years, this award is probably the one thing that I look forward to seeing presented every, every quarter. It, it comes with a host of, of special items. Maybe not a host of, it comes with some special items, but the recognition by the whole county and all of the county employees is, at the very most, it's just unbelievable to see these, these different employees receive these excellence awards. Because like I said, they're nominated and presented by the department heads, the employees in there. This quarter, out of the Sheriff's Office, is congratulations to Sherri Hutchinson. Do you want to do the nomination letters? Sherri Hutchinson has been landing up, heading up the UCSO Christmas for our resource families for quite a few years now. This project takes so much time and she does it with enthusiasm every year. She reaches out to DHS and collects information of how many people who are in need. She compiles the list of seven to 15 children and multiple families, including ages, clothing, sizes, needs, and wants. She sends out emails with all of the information to Yumatoa County Sheriff's Office staff and the UCSO employees. All of the employees bring in gifts after she sent these out. She then coordinates the wrapping of the gifts and plans a get together with Santa and the kids. She is very organized and does all of this out of the goodness of her heart. We appreciate her so much and her caring nature makes her an excellent employee. She does all of this on top of our dispatch newsletter, which I, it is incredible newsletter. You're doing a great job. And all of her regular duties as a dispatcher. She deserves to be thanked and recognized as an outstanding employee. Congratulations. I also, now that the holiday season is, is starting to wrap up, I, I would like to personally recognize the whole Sheriff's Office and the leadership of the Sheriff's Office. Sherri's project is only one of several projects that the Yumatoa County Sheriff's Office takes on every year, including, if, if you've ever seen Jim Littlefield's in the Sheriff's Office Facebook page, they fill EOTech with gifts. They go to Walmart and then from Walmart, they separate all of these gifts and then they're transported to different Ronald McDonald's houses and hospital support houses throughout the, the region. Started with one hospital, one.
A couple of Walmarts and one, one or two hospitals.
Yeah, and now it's 13. And, and it goes basically from Tacoma to Spokane. And from what I heard during the, the package time was that there almost could go in one year. I mean, but not, not just that, but what Sherri puts on, but the whole Sheriff's Office and, and how they approach the holidays throughout Yumatoa County. My thanks to Sheriff Rowan and, and his whole team for sure. That's all I have.
Well, I'm not gonna cheap and try and follow that up. I want to congratulate Ben. We were together for a long time. And I think the average life expectancy for a 911 dispatcher was seven years. Not life expectancy. I was correct on that. I think it's seven years. Is that right, Captain?
Yes, I told him he couldn't pass away. It wasn't gonna happen.
Yeah, so seven years. He's been doing it for 20, so. Okay, moving on to approval of minutes of previous meeting.
Move for approval?
Second.
Second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any additions to the agenda?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Public input recognition of visitors. Now is the time on the agenda we set aside for any comments that are not on the agenda previously, either online or in person. Saying not in person, we'll keep moving on. Moving to the business part of our agenda. Number one, election of board officers for 2023. Did you want to do that or are we gonna do that? Okay. As outlined in Order BCC 2013-078 and the Charter, the chair position rotates among the three commissioners. The proposed chair for 2023 is Commissioner Doran, with Commissioner Shaffer as vice chair. And this will be Order Number BCC 2023-001.
I'll second it.
Okay. Got a motion, a second all favor. The motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, we have a new chair. Congratulations.
Thanks, John. I'm, just so you know, I'm gonna sit here because my eyes aren't as good as John's, so I can watch the, the screen and know that the public participation and when people raise their hand, I'm able to see what's going on here. So I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and remain on this side. Thank you, and big shoes to follow. Obviously, the last chairs and several chairs over the history of this commission, big, big shoes to fill. The next item on the agenda is our commissioner assignments. These are Lea'son assignments that are established each January and then voted on. Do you want to handle that, Doug? You want me to read them in?
Or you can just act on it too.
Okay. Lea'son assignments have been agreed upon from the, by the commissioners, including the new commissioner. And these are big chores, and I would move for.
I move to accept these, the Lea'son.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accepted Lea'son's assignments as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass as you know, Mr. Lee. Next item of business is a public works purchase, and I see Tom Fellowes in the crowd.
Morning, Commissioners. Tom Fellowes, Public Works Director. So when I brought before you today, back in October, Public Works Department purchased a cabin chassis. The intent for this truck was to be used for our roadside vegetation management. Since then, we've been, been working on how to outfit the truck and, and make it a little more productive piece of machinery. Moving forward, part of that process is to outfit it with a, a new flatbed. We talked with Northwest Farm Supply and asked them if they could deliver that, and they actually came up with something that, that suits us. So we're requesting permission to purchase the flatbed from Northwest Farm Supply for $6,599.
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of the flatbed. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Perfect.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next item on the agenda is the mail service contract. Is Kenny here or? Perfect.
Morning, Commissioners. Lieutenant Dustin Erickson, Yumatoa County Sheriff's Office Corrections Division. So we're looking, we've been doing some research on some different avenues to be able to scan incoming mail from the general public into the facility to the inmates which reside within the facility. The issue behind that is, is now that we've had a body scanner, more and more substances have been entering the facility through the mail. There are other options to what we're looking at that are quite, quite a bit more expensive. The current one that we are in front of you, in front of you for today is Pigeonly. It's a company that operates, it operates our entire mail like the post office. The general public would send, family and friends would send their mail through this company. This company would then scan it for any kind of paraphernalia, contraband, anything threatening in nature. They actually make a copy, an authentic looking copy of, of said mail, and then they redistribute it. I believe it's a three-day turnaround into the facility with one of their own envelopes. The cost on this significantly cheaper than the other options of mail scanners. It's based on $4 per inmate. Current contract that we were presented with when we had our initial meeting was set at, I believe, 120 inmates, which roughly came out to, I can't remember the number off the top of my head. I didn't bring it with me. Was.
6,800 or something?
See, it was close to there, yes. Where as a mail scanner would cost anywhere from about $45,000 to $75,000 with an additional about $5,000 maintenance and service contract on top of that yearly. It's pretty, in my opinion, in our opinion, it's a pretty important piece to have in place for the safety not only of, of the, of our staff, but the inmate population within the facility.
From my understanding, once it's scanned, so my mail goes to Nevada, gets scanned, from my understanding, the inmate could actually read it instantly off of one of the, off of the commissary tablets.
So that, that's, that is an option. That is, that is another option. Ours would be that we can, we can read it initially. So once it's been scanned through the system and, and it's en route to us, we would have the capability of printing it off and distributing said mail. However, it does come in an envelope form with their envelope. And that way, we don't have to worry about stamps, anything, what, any substance or anything on, on the envelope itself. It has a one-time-use QR code that scanned once it, once it arrives at our facility and we process that mail. So it can't be used again. So even once we distribute that mail, they can't save QR codes and then distribute them to family or the envelope and try to reuse it in some, some form or fashion. So it makes it to where they can't manipulate it on another end.
And there's cases where fentanyl is coming into facilities, correct?
Correct. It's, it's, it's across the state through the, through the, the Jail Command Council meetings that we've had. It's, it's a pretty bad, pretty bad situation for about every facility in the state. And, and those of them that do have the, the mail scanners, they have mail scanners that you can place the mail in and it scans it sheet by sheet. They said that the reason it's only operating about 50, 60%, they're not catching everything. Or we believe that this system where it would go there. So once the mail's there, it's not just gone forever. So if it was like something of some sort of sentimental value, the sender does have the option to contact the company and have said mail returned within a 60-day period. After a 60-day period, that mail would be destroyed.
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval with moving forward the contract with Pigeon, Pigeonly for the, this fiscal year.
It's been moved and seconded to move forward with the, the mail scanning contract with Pigeonly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Pass as you know. Next is the, another Sheriff's Office purchase.
You do?
This is the request to purchase five bulletproof vests.
Yeah, so we've come into a time where a lot of our vests are becoming expired. They have a five-year shelf life expectancy to where we're, you're wanting to rotate those out. They are expensive, so we're looking at trying to do it in stages. Currently, the five that we're requesting are for our, our transport officers, our transport team, which, which is compiled of three people. And then our other two sergeants that haven't currently been fitted for a new one. They're, they're the, the five people that do the majority of our, our court transports, medical transports, anything that is related to taking any of, any of our clientele outside of the facility. It's expensive, but I, it's, it's probably one of our most important pieces of equipment to have.
What do you do with the, the old vests?
Usually destroy them.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of five bulletproof vests. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
None opposed? Thank you. Item on the law enforcement commute authorization.
Good morning. Doug Olson, County Council. The next two items are the annual commute orders. This is what allows county employees to commute in their county-owned vehicles. The first one is for law enforcement employees. This looks essentially the same as last year and conforms with the current practice of who has been allowing to commute in the county-owned vehicles.
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of the option of Order BCC 2023-002.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Order BCC 2023-002. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the next one is for non-law enforcement employees. This is primarily on the Public Works Department and the district attorney. This allows the employee to use a county vehicle to commute. However, there is a taxable benefit to the employee which, for which they are taxed. And this is, there have not been any additions for these positions that are being requested.
I move to adopt Order Number BCC 2023-003.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to adopt Order Number BCC 2023-003. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item is a van purchase.
This is coming for the board for approval for the purchase of a van to the Agape House. This is part of the CDBG grant that the county sponsored. The invitation to bid was issued. One was received, and it meets the specifications for the van. And so it is being requested that you award the contract for the van purchase to Rogers Toyota.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we give notice that, that award contract for purchase of a car will be in Rogers Dodge.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the CDBG van purchase. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item is a board payable.
And you might have an older one. There is a vehicle purchase being requested. This is for a replacement vehicle for the Board of Commissioners. This is being purchased through the fleet management program, and it is a Jeep Cherokee that is available for delivery. I, minor sanity. And so requested for.
I think this is all Cindy.
For approval to authorize the lease and authorize the chair design.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of purchase of 2022 Jeep Cherokee and authorize the chair design lease.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of a Jeep Cherokee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is.
That's a board payable. And this is before because the dollar amount, it is over $5,000, and so it is for the NICO Leadership Academy.
Great program. They're both Nicos.
What's NICO?
All Nicos.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next one is another board payable. This is for the AOC dues for 2023, and it is in approximately $35,000.
I move. I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and approved, or moved and seconded to approve the board table for the annual dues for AOC. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is a department ordinance amendment, public hearing.
This is before the board for to amend the county department organization ordinance. There are primarily two changes relating to recent actions taken by the board in solicitude to come into compliance with what has already been taken place. Primarily, it is to rename the county department to Community Development Department and realign its duties of moving economic development from the board to the new department. And this will be the first reading, and then after the public hearing, we can schedule a second meeting. So at this time, you might want to open the public hearing.
At this time, I open the, this is a public hearing. We will hear from both the supporters and the opposed. So any supporters of this ordinance wish to speak? Seeing none, any opposition to this ordinance wishing to speak? We'll close the public hearing and schedule this for a next hearing.
Yeah, the request would be to set the second hearing for the first board meeting in February.
I'd make a motion to set that for the meeting he said.
First board meeting in February.
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded to move this public hearing on the ordinance amendment to the first Board of Commissioners meeting in February. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item is a pipeline valves contract.
This matter went up for invitation to bid for the pipeline, for valves for the ordinance pipeline project. There were three that were received, and the recommendation is to go with the lowest bid. Dykman gave the lowest bid. The other two bids did have some potential problems with them, but since they are of higher amount, the recommendation is to award the bid to Dykman for a little over $300,000.
Mr. Chair, I move approval to award that bid to Dykman.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of valves from Dykman Inc. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item is pipeline drive contract.
This is coming before the board for approval to give a notice of intent to award another item for the ordinance pipeline project. This is for the drive. The invitation was issued and three bids were received on it. In this case, Dykman was the one recommended for $133,000, $110. There were two lower bids. Both of them had technical issues. Stonely did not have an approved manufactured, did not bid a manufactured item off of the approved list, and there were other problems with that specification. That bid was $369,000. And then the third bid from Wesco was, also had deficiencies to it, so it is also non-responsive. There was insufficient detail. There were exceptions. Delivery was an issue. So based on that, and that first for about $511,000, just slightly less than Dykman. So the recommendation from the technical review is to award the, give the notice of intent to award to Dykman for $533,110.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the pipeline drive contract, Dykman Inc. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. That brings us to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Timmons, any comments?
I do have a comment. I am honored to be here, and because of some wise words of somebody, I want to make sure that I recognize first, I'm here because of God and the voters that put me here, but my family and friends that worked so hard to make that happen. And so for everybody in this room that's here, thank you. And it's an honor to be here, and you can't imagine what it's like to sit here and look out at you, and so thank you for putting me here. And I'm honored.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Same, ditto. That was very well said. So no, I too am honored. It's just, it truly is a blessing to be sitting here in front of you, so, and I look forward to serving you for the next four years.
Thank you, Commissioner Schaefer, and all I have to say is it's, it's like a great team to me, so we've got a lot of work to do, a lot of issues in front of us, challenges, opportunities, and I think that with our heads down and moving forward, we can take them along. Congratulations to all. With that said, meeting adjourned.